Okay, everyone, good evening. Today is Wednesday, November 13, 2019, and this is a regular meeting of the Montclair Zoning Board of Adjustment. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice here on the first floor of the municipal building, sending a copy to the Montclair Times and the Star Ledger. Roll call. Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer is excused this evening. Mr. Church?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Mr. Caulfield will be joining us shortly.
We have the minutes of the October 16 meeting on page three, line five. After, on the property at the beginning of the line, put in, subject to the conditions that had been discussed by the board. And then on line eight, after, discuss the proposed motion and put in, delete recommended and put in, determined that it would also require that the applicant return. Anyone else with any other changes to those minutes?
Yes.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept amendments.
As amended.
As amended.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. Then we have the resolution which I'm abstaining on, so I can't be helpful.
Graham, who's eligible to vote on this?
Eligible on this.
Sorry, just give me one second. Eligible on this is everyone except Mr. Allen and Mr. Harrison.
I'll move the motion that the resolution on...
Montclair Towns...
Be adopted?
It will be adopted.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Abstained.
The first application is the continuation of the public hearing for the property at 11 Oxford Street. Are you ready to proceed?
Sure, sure. This is to announce that the application 2643 for property at 10 Alexander Avenue, applicant Bruce Bird. The applicant has requested to carry this matter to the December 18, 2019, meeting of the board. The application will be carried with no further notice.
You were sworn in at the previous hearing, you're still under oath.
Just state your names and addresses for the record again, please.
My name is Muntal Song. I address East City Avenue, Oxford Street.
John Moncheck, I'm the architect, 118 Yantecar Brook Road, Montclair, New Jersey.
Okay, you want to tell us how you revise the plans for the House to address the concerns you raised at the last meeting?
Okay. I brought a revised rendering with me that I'm going to hand out right now.
So we'll mark that A2. We marked last month's rendering A1.
Correct.
So this should be A2.
I think we had an A2 and this is A3.
Yeah, I think we're up to A4.
Oh, A4.
Yeah.
I think it's about A3.
Okay.
Because we have the front yard setback. I think it's three.
No. The minutes said it was an A3. For the new garage. All right, so we're marking this as A4?
Yes.
Which is the revised rendering dated November 12, 2019?
Okay, so we were asked to see, well, to address the issues brought up by the HPC that were listed in their recommendations from the meeting we had before their board. And some additional concerns that were brought up here at the last zoning board of adjustment meeting we had. The major change, changes were to the offset of the existing addition from the front of the existing building. That offset was increased. And the other general change was to the configuration of the attic floor exterior. So I'm just looking at the site plan survey. So originally, our addition was offset one foot behind the front facade of the existing building. We've increased it to two feet now on the first and second floors. Actually, it might be best to look at it on the floor plan. So again, we changed from one foot to two-foot offset in the front. And then on the first and second floor and on the upper, the attic level, then I increased the setback an additional two feet for a total of four-foot setback to the wall of the attic addition. And I did that by incorporating some ideas that were mentioned from the HPC and I think one, maybe one or two ideas that were mentioned here. So what we did was create more of the appearance, as it were, of a dormer for that addition, although it's technically not a dormer, but a dormer appearance from the side. But in the front, we took the detail from the existing garage that was recommended to us by the store committee and incorporated a similar design in that top level, which includes a slope portion coming from the top plate of the second floor, a slope roof portion going up and back, and then dying into this applied gable that sits against the flat base of the addition behind it. I added a window, arch window, smaller, similar to the garage, existing garage windows. And then I pulled the peak, I decided I would pull the peak just slightly above the line of the fascia of the roof behind it, just to make it a little more predominant over that facade. But of course, it's a smaller gable in relationship to the main gable in the front. And then this slope portion of, this small slope portion then wraps around the side and continues, appears to continue around the backside of that top story portion. I'm showing a three-on-12 pitch right now. I'm trying to get as much pitch as I can. Actually, the ends of the fascia are below seven feet, even though the ceiling is seven feet. And I'm actually dropping them down a little lower than the height of the room. I'm showing the three clear story windows there. That corresponds to the windows I'm adding on the opposite side, although they won't be seen together. And then back to some more basic features, we reduced the size of the second entrance door. We got rid of the side lights. We reintroduced the existing window detail that is originally sitting about here, where we're putting double doors on the second floor, an existing second floor. We're going to move that element over to our new facade. And I guess I'm just going to point out that in the process of doing it, the client indicated they wanted to expand the area of the deck. So you see now, there's a railing continuing all the way across the side, so they want to have a deck that continues all the way around the currently unoccupied roof area in the back. I'll just show you here. So the original deck was just to the right side of the rear, now we're wrapping it around to the left side. There's about, what is that? There's about 10 feet of deck right behind. This way now, now doors are going to have to come out of the sitting room. The doors come out, right out of the master bedroom. It's a better, better way to access the deck and it cleans up, allows us to be a sitting room in the back. It just cleans, or a closet for them. It just cleans up the plan for them quite a lot. I'm just glancing at HPC comments, but I think that addresses everything on their list. Yeah.
Questions from members of the board? Mr. McCullough?
Yes, thank you. There are a couple of questions. One, when you mentioned that this new deck area is accessed by the master bedroom...
Right.
Looking at A2. And so would I be accurate in saying that the only way to get to that deck would be to go through the master bedroom?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Then another question I have is with respect to that deck, looking at your renderings and the roof lines that correspond to it, it looks like the potential for a lot of water to be directed to that deck. So is that deck intended to be level or will it be, will it have a slant to it to provide for water runoff or what's the plan for that?
Yes, we'll have to design a pitch into the roof to get, to get water off, yes. So most likely it's a wood or composite deck that sits on top of a rubber roof with a slope to get the water off. So the, under the definite level, it would sit on a slightly sloped roof area.
Is it correct that those proposed roof pitches are shown on A2, number three, the proposed roof plan?
Yes.
That's right.
Other questions from members of the board? Let me, I just, okay, two things. One, can you go over where you moved the facade back? Somewhat struggling comparing the old plans with the new plans, understanding...
Should I compare the plan or the elevation?
Plan is probably better.
Okay.
Well, I'll leave it to you whether I do the floor plan or whatever you think best shows the difference.
Yeah, I need the, I don't have a lot of information of the previous floor plan.
If you point out on there, I have your old plans and new plans and I can...
Okay, perfect. The bottom line is the plan didn't change much, but again, we're trying to keep as much of the original design at the client's wishes. But as this is starting on the first floor, we basically increased the size of the front foyer by a foot. So we squeezed the front foyer, I'm looking at the first floor. We squeezed the front foyer so that, I added a landing at the bottom of the stair run and then pushed the last rail to the right.
Okay, so...
So...
Dimension of two feet, it was one feet on the prior plan.
Correct, correct. Same thing on the second floor. We went from one foot to two feet. And then on the third floor, I'm showing the two separate dimensions, right? So there's the two setback of the roof below on the second floor.
And then you have...
And then another two to the right. So I'm just squeezing up the headroom.
So it's a total of three feet further back than...
Previously, yes.
Than our original plan?
Yes.
Okay. And then I just, the Historic Preservation Commission, there are, went through in terms of what the changes that you made in saying you complied with those, but there are a couple of things that don't show up as such.
Sure.
The fifth is the commission recommends wood, aluminum, clad wood or aluminum as the preferred material for the new windows and that the new windows be fitted with historic sill. Will you be complying with that?
Yes. And I do saw the sills on the rendering.
It's a little of the scale.
Okay.
And you, that the sixth condition is that wood railing for the proposed porch addition, you'll be complying with that?
Yes.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience with questions or comments on the application?
Would you raise your right hand if you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Kathleen Bennett, 10 Glenwood Road, chairperson of the HPC. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for making the changes that we suggested. I think the dormer that you've added really reflects the gable of the carriage house, so I think that's really a nice touch. I do have a question, though. Graham, just, I stopped by and I saw the plans today up in the planning office, so that's how. I haven't seen them right now, but I saw them before. So my, but my question is about the windows. The one that we saw at the HPC, the windows in the front, you have six over six, and the ones that are on this that Graham just handed me are three over three, which are more vertical. They're not the same configuration.
Graham? Well, they aren't exactly what's there either, they're closer.
So you propose to do this style, the vertical, three over three?
Well...
I'm just, I'm just wondering where that came, are you echoing the side windows at the top?
Yes, right now, the mullions are roughly are shown with a diamond at the top of each third of...
And the windows on this...
Yes, right, right. They're the only ones that we think are original. And we're not sure they're original, are they?
Well, the second floor is original, but the bottom one, I think, is all went on the replace.
So you're, so just to get it straight, you're proposing this configuration with the mullions, the ones that you, the one that you showed tonight?
Yes.
Which is different from, from what you showed us at the HPC?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then my other question, which Mr. Harrison asked, is about the railings, that they're going to be wooden.
Yeah, yeah. That's clear on the elevations. It's, hold on, it's wooden railings.
And then my question then, for the east facade, it's also about the windows, that you've got these high vertical windows up here as opposed to replicating the more traditional ones?
So that's the kitchen?
Up here?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, on the third floor.
Oh, on the third floor, yeah. Right, those are similar to the windows. I'm adding on the other side. But no, you're right, they're not.
It's not what we saw, that's, I'm just...
Correct.
Okay. So you're going to duplicate this same size on the other side, on the west side?
Correct.
Okay. Well, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments from anyone in the audience? Anything further either of you wish to add before we discuss the vote on the application?
No.
We'll start discussion with Ms. Harris.
Thank you for making the changes that you did. I think it's an improvement to the initial plan...
Thank you.
...that you presented. I'm in favor of the variances being sought here.
Mr. Simon?
Yeah, I'm also in favor. I think it's a nice revision, so in favor.
Mr. Church?
I'd be in favor of the application also. I think it does not violate any of the zoning requirements or the master plan for that area, so I'd vote in favor of the application.
Mr. Allen?
I agree with my colleagues, I'm in favor.
Mr. McCullough?
I'm also in favor.
I'm also in favor, as we discussed last time, no issue with the yard variances, they're just reflecting the existing conditions. The issue we had was with the third floor that, given the constraints on the property and the changes the applicant made in response to both the Historic Preservation Commission and the suggestions this board made at the last meeting, it's a vast improvement and it, you know, to some extent resembles, more closely resembles, a two-and-a-half story house, even though it technically isn't. And, you know, so this is not going to cause a substantial impairment to this own plan or a substantial detriment to the public good. We, I mean, my understanding is the substantive conditions of the Historic Preservation Commission they're complying with, you know, as requested in Condition Seven or Eight, they say, you know, we should impose those, that they be required to go back to Historic Preservation Commission to make sure the end product is what it's supposed to be. Okay, someone want to make a motion?
Motion to accept the suggestion.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go, go improve the House.
Thank you.
And just for the record, Mr. Caulfield has arrived. The next application is that of John Florrick for property at 48 Label Street. This is an application for a variance to construct in addition to existing one-family dwelling. Property is in the R2-2 family zone. The property is designated on the township tax maps as Lot 36 and Block 3,310. Variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45A2 to permit a three-story principal building for two-and-a-half stories as a maximum permitting. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum front yard setback for principal buildings of less than the required 25 feet. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 45C1 to permit a minimum side yard setback for principal buildings of less than the required six feet from one side and 10 feet on the other. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45C4 to permit a maximum building width for principal buildings more than the permitted 65 percent of the width of a lot. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45T to permit a minimum rear yard setback for principal buildings of less than the required 25... rear yard setback for principal buildings of less than the required 25 feet. And a variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 346-2A to permit a minimum side yard setback for accessory structures of less than the required six feet for the installation of HVAC units. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes.
That was exhausting.
[laughing].
Okay, Mr. Tramulak, want to give your appearance?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alan Tramulak appearing on behalf of the applicant, John Florrick. This application involves property located at 48 Label Street. It's an application for a number of variances to, in connection with my client's proposal to expand the single-family house located on this property. This has to be one of the smallest lots in the town of Montclair. It's only 24 feet wide. The total size of the lot is only 1,680 square feet. The reason that so many variances are required in connection with this expansion is that everything about this property is non-conforming, starting with the lot with, as I've already mentioned. All of the yards are non-conforming to current ordinance requirements, the front yard, rear yard, and side yards. So the only, my client wants to expand this house, he bought it recently and intends to ultimately move into the house with his fiance, future wife, and that's the reason for the expansion. The existing house is only 1,100 square feet. So anything that is done with this house is going to require variances, and the only way to expand is by going up. And that's exactly what's proposed. No change in the building footprint, but the proposed expansion is vertical. So that's basically the introduction to the application, and I ask that Mr. Florrick be sworn in to discuss this.
Would you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
State your name and address.
John Florrick. I currently reside at 295 Claremont Ave, Montclair, New Jersey, apartment number five.
Mr. Florrick, you own the property at 48 Label Street?
Yes.
And when did you purchase that property?
The end of June.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't currently live in the house, correct?
No.
Is it rented?
No, no.
It's vacant?
Correct.
Okay. And you intend to live in the house at some point in the future after you hopefully renovate it according to the plans that you've presented to the board?
Yes.
Okay. Regarding the plans, did you personally prepare the?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you explain why you're seeking to expand the house and then review the plans with the board?
Okay. I guess, in short, the property's tiny. The second level is a half-story that's already dormered. In the bathroom, you, on one side, you know, taller guy, my fiance and I can't stand there, so obviously the ceiling would have to be raised. The bedrooms are small, they barely fit a queen-size bed. So really, I think my plans are pretty straightforward. I want to keep the existing footprint on the first floor and just build up on that. On the second level, I intend to have a bedroom in the front and in the rear with a bathroom on that level as well. My plans, I didn't change them, but that third bedroom would function more so as an office. Sometimes I have the luxury of working from home, so I'd like to do that there. And then, on the third level, we would have an additional half-story, which measures less than 50%, the total length of the facade of the property, with a plate height of less than two feet. So I believe that is categorized as a half-story with a master bedroom with a master bath. And then, off the back, there's a deck, which is accessible from the staircase. You don't have to be in the master to access that. And really, we just want to make it a little bit more livable.
Do you know the square footage of the existing house?
Yes, so the existing square footage is just over 1,100 square feet.
All right. And if you were to perform the renovations as proposed on these plans, what would the increased square footage?
It would be just about 2,000 square feet.
Total?
Correct.
Okay. Did you, you appeared before the Historic Preservation Commission to discuss this.
Yes.
And have you seen the report prepared by the Historic Preservation Commission dated October 10, 2019?
Yes, I have, and, you know, I'm happy to work with the Historic Preservation Committee on points two through four. Point one, I would just note that the two locations, they ask for the windows, look into closet and bathroom and the shower.
So, all right, so there's four recommendations or four conditions that HPC requested, and you've indicated that you're willing to comply with Conditions Two, Three, and Four?
Yeah, I mean, I would work something out, I guess, on the first point, you know, even if it were, you know, a frosted window or something like that, that really didn't show into that.
We're struggling, we didn't get the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission. Graham's going to make copies, so if there are other things you can go over?
Sure. From the?
We'll come back to that. Wait till they get the HPC. I don't know, is there anything else you wanted to discuss regarding the plans?
I mean, I don't know exactly, you know, whatever else you guys like to hear about, I'm happy to discuss.
We'll have some questions after we finish discussing the HPC report. But just so it's clear, you're not proposing to expand the building outward in any way?
The footprint is going to remain the same. I don't want to build anything beyond that, you know, it's just going up. The existing half-story is, you know, I could take like three big steps across it, you know, it's tiny. So we just want to create a second level that runs the same length as the first floor.
And also, obviously, because we're talking about HPC, you are proposing substantial improvements to the front facade, correct?
Correct. We, you know, I originally went with something a little more modern. This is a potential historic zone, so I understand that you'd like the property to be in line with that character, and I'm willing to, you know, do that, so that blends into the community.
So you're willing to work with HPC to come up with an alternative?
Yes.
Design, alternative finishes, et cetera?
Right, I'm pretty flexible on the finishes.
Okay. I think that's all we have until.
Are there questions from the board, other than Historic Preservation?
The windows that you're showing on a proposed streetscape?
Mm-hmm.
Those are really out of character, so you're willing to change them?
I believe what's in character with the area is double-hung windows, and I have casement windows. I use the casement windows because they're a little bit bigger for means of egress, and I'm willing to, I'd like to put grills on them so that they appear as if they're double-hung windows, but, you know, they're just a little larger, which I think, you know...
Okay. Also, I noticed on the drawings and on the streetscape photograph, that the air and light of the house next to you is curtailed a lot with your addition. I mean, they have a second and third floor where they have open space. You're going to block that. Have you had any discussions with those people concerning that?
You know, I understand there might be some pushback for that. You know, I'm working with a pretty small lot, you know, and I'm trying to do everything I can to expand it respectfully to the community, but I do understand that I'm here for a reason, and, you know, I don't have the necessary setback.
Going back to the HPC, so if you look on page three, you'll see on the first, the second level, they're requesting one of those windows be right on the right side in the right front, right above the staircase. That's a closet, if you see on, and then if you look on page four, I believe it is, yeah, four, they're requesting a window be right in the middle of the third floor, and that's a shower. So again, like, I'm willing to work with them to add some sort of like frosted window or something like that, but I just don't think from the street, that's desirable, just look into a closet and bathroom.
That's something you're willing to work with?
Yeah, but again, like, you know, if that's a concern, you know, I'm happy to work with them to create something that works for everyone. So, just overall, you're not changing any of the footprint, you're just literally just going?
I'm just going up, I'm staying below 35 feet. I'm trying, you know, if you look at all my neighbors, I'm trying to have a house, you know, like those guys.
Mr. McCollough?
So you said that on the third, on the third level, you said there's a shower, is that what you said?
Excuse me?
There's a shower off of the master bath, is that what?
So on page four?
On page four.
That bench that you see, that's a shower, that's a shower. It's off of the master bath.
So on either side of that, what is that, just?
That's essentially going to be lost space.
Lost space. And that's because?
Which I'm counting toward my gross square footage.
Okay. And it's lost space because of the slants of the?
So, so I'm, on the third level?
Right.
I'm looking at this as a half-story. And that's because the dormer area, you know, I'm not dormering the whole thing. So I lose that space on?
You lose that space, okay. So, is the basement currently fully finished?
No, it's like a basement.
I mean, there is a?
There is a?
There's a cement foundation?
There's a cement foundation, there is a full bath in the basement, and there's, right now, there's a washer and dryer, you know?
So, and then on the second floor, I think that's page three?
Sure.
The number says, yeah, okay. You then have three bedrooms on the second floor?
Right, I mean?
You have five closets. Does that imply you anticipate five people on that floor?
No. Bedroom three, like I stated, is really, I'm going to use that as an office. You know, I would, with my fiancee, occupy the top level and one day have little ones.
One day you might, yes.
Hopefully, hopefully. But, yeah, that...
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because on that level, I mean, given the number of bedrooms that you have, and, I mean, you have a very small bath that's accommodating potentially three bedrooms?
Two.
Potentially three bedrooms, right? I mean, you know the space better than I, I mean, in terms of envisioning it up.
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand whether or not one, that the size of the bath that you have, that you're proposing, is it really sufficient in order to facilitate?
I mean, I guess life throws you curveballs, but I'm not anticipating having, you know, three, or that bathroom necessarily accommodating so many people. And there's also a bathroom on the first floor, you know, and one on the top.
One question. You mentioned that the deck off of the master bedroom was accessible some other way besides the master bedroom, is that?
Yeah, I, no, I just mentioned that because I heard it come up earlier about a big deck were only accessible with 11 Oxford. This, if you look on page four, you don't have to necessarily walk into the master bedroom to access that area.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
It's at the, it's at the landing at the top of the staircase.
Okay.
So...
And then, I guess this might be a question for you, Graham. I don't quite understand Condition Two of the HPC's recommendation.
So in this, the commission was concerned, if you turn to the cover page of the submitted plans, in the rendering of the proposed dwelling, the eaves at the dormer level are much smaller than that of the main roofline, and the commission just wanted them to be a little bit more consistent, have a greater overhang at the roofline at the dormer level, so be consistent with the lower level below.
Okay.
So it didn't show that way in the rendering. I think the plan, the elevations may have been more correct.
Yeah, yeah.
They just wanted that, to emphasize that point, to make sure that they were consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Just on the HVAC, I'm a little confused because you're showing HVAC unit on the first and the third floors, and you're showing the two in the rear, and what are they all doing?
Well, currently, now the property doesn't have central air or anything like that, so...
I understand, I'm wondering why four and why two inside and two outside?
You know, I thought that would be the best. I don't really have a good answer. I thought that property was big enough, do you need that?
So you have, but you have two condensers?
Two condensers.
And two furnaces, right?
Right.
Okay.
Two condensers, and then there's one for the inside and one on the first floor, and then on the third floor.
Yes, yes.
So it's essentially two systems, it's a dual zone?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's two components to each of the systems, interior and exterior.
Right.
Would you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
Kathleen Bennett, Ten Glenwood Road, Chairperson of the HPC. Nice to see you again, Mr. Florrick.
Nice to see you.
This came before us in October, and so I'd like to go over the points that we had discussed at our HPC meeting, but I must say I'm a little surprised, because the first point was that the proposed exterior finished details do not adhere to the established neighborhood design principles. So what you had showed us in October hasn't changed at all, correct?
Correct. I didn't make any changes to it based on recommendations to present the plans as they stood when I presented them to you.
Okay. So I'd just like to inform the, this board, that this property is in the proposed historic district of Christopher Street area, which is a, developed between 1885 and 1901, and the area consists of two to three-story single-family houses built in a variety of styles, including Queen Anne, shingle, 20th century revival style. Prominent architectural materials include wood, brick, and stucco. So the... So the, the, oh, the features that this facade presented to us as the HPC did not contribute at all to the overall character of the historic district, and I thought tonight that maybe it would have, it would have changed, but that's just a point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to work with the HPC, to deliver something that would be more uniform to the Christopher Street.
I think?
And to further clarify, the applicant did reach out to the, to the department to ask if he should revise the full set of plans, we thought for clarity and for consistency, he should maintain the same plan so that the memo responds exactly to the plans that he presented to the HPC, so that the board has the benefit of seeing the exact same plans that the HPC saw and see their comments in that context.
Okay, so I, I wasn't aware of that, this is just what I, what I saw today. And then the other thing is, although the HP said that the, the proposed design, or the proposed structure is compatible with other residences in the Christopher Street potential district with respect to cal, scale, massing, and height, we, as, as a commission, as a body, were very concerned about the adverse effect that Mr. Church had mentioned on the, on the neighboring house. We did see the consistent height, but it's, we were counseled at our meeting that that was something that we couldn't discuss, that, that's out of our purview, and that's for your purview. And then the other thing is that the proposed doors and windows, again, which is mentioned at number three, are not compatible in design, material proportion, and detail of nearby buildings, and do not contribute to the overall character of the potential historic area. So I don't know if this will be, can I request that it, that we review it again with the, because this is a, a total building, I don't know if that's?
That's, that's number three of the memo the commission is requesting at the upper term.
Which we've agreed to.
Oh, okay.
Plans to go back and meet with the HPC?
With the HPC?
To address all of these concerns.
Okay.
To, to design the windows, the doors, all of the concerns that you had, he's, again, indicated he'll go back to HPC as a condition of this board's approval.
Okay, okay, so then you, then tonight, you, like I mentioned, we were not, we cannot discuss the variances, so I just wanted the, this board to be aware of our concerns with the HPC. Okay, thank you.
I want to talk to you about the fenestration, but let me first, you, you don't have a condition that reflects number three in your findings as, as such, and I want to understand, my understanding from your testimony is that you have, you want that to be a condition, that the, the doors and windows be changed, is that correct?
Yes, because if, in the, the conditions, we, we have said that the windows and how they should be changed, additional fenestration, the second floor, I guess that's the only one that's window, a window.
Right, you, I mean, I, I was reading three, one because it's dealing with doors, and number one is just dealing with windows, and just dealing with windows on the second floor, are, one, are you only concerned with windows on the second floor, or?
Uh, I don't have a picture of the, of the building as proposed in front of me, but there was concern amongst the, ever, the entire commission of all of the windows.
Okay, and then on, um, and comment on, on the windows, would just, that an additional one be added, which the applicant has indicated makes no sense in terms of what's behind them, and do you have any response to his comments on why it isn't logical to have the windows at the proposed locations?
Did you testify that it was going to be, uh, for, is it a closet or a shower?
I, I mentioned that when I met with you guys as well, on the second floor, we didn't put the window above, above the, the door, the front door, because there's a closet there, and additionally, on the third floor, we didn't put a window there because it's a shower, and?
But, now, didn't you indicate that you were going to change the interior plans to conform to what the suggestion was from the HPC?
Uh, I, I did not say I would change the interior plans, no.
Okay. We had suggested that they, they window there?
But listen, I, if, if this is the sticking point of my application, I'm happy to add some sort of window that might be frosted, or a stained glass window that might, you know, add that fenestration that you guys really want to see, you know, I'm, I'm willing to work with you here, you know, on, on it, you know, it's just, for, for, that, that's what I have, you know, and hopefully, you know, doing?
Well, we'd have to come back to the entire commission, I, I can't.
Okay, any other questions?
I would, I would, I would meet with you guys.
Detectives, go back and, and try to work out all these issues with the commission and, and respond to these concerns.
Do any members of the board have any additional questions from the representative of the Historic Preservation Commission? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public with comments on the application?
Would you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
Priscilla Eshelman, directly next door at fifty Label Street. I have an extensive statement and some visuals I want to show, but I know this is the question period, I just?
No, you can do everything.
Can I? All right, great. My first question would be, how many decibels is the HVAC?
I, I would probably have to consult my contractor on that, who is here?
It's four feet from my pillow. Are you planning sprinklers throughout the house?
I, I would consult my contractor for that, but?
They're not in your current plan.
I think if, if sprinklers are required by code, you would have to.
Yeah, I would?
We seem pretty far from code right now. Why are there no windows on the east side?
Um, per, per the building, as it was, as I, as I purchased it, there were no windows on that side.
There is a window, in the living room.
And they were?
Yeah, there's a window, I look right out on it.
Okay.
Okay, and finally, my last question is, what is the purpose of a windowless dormer?
For additional bedroom?
Why don't we just call it three stories?
Um, just a moment, I've got my visual. I have put a great deal of work into my preparation for tonight.
Okay, first of all, you're going to have to go over by the, or bring a microphone with you.
Okay.
Well, now, I'd like to give her?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You can do it by your exhibit.
I will, and I have a handout for you as well. Everything I've worked on the line right now.
Thank you. We'll hand these around. Just hand me to those, we'll pass them down. Okay, we're, we're going to mark this handout, which has a number of sheets, total of ten sheets, as exhibit oh-one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll need to take one you guys.
Go ahead, go ahead. I think, I, those board members can, they can look at, yeah.
I think there's another one here.
They're coming, they're coming around.
Okay.
All right, and the, the board, you also have another exhibit?
That's in here.
That is, that is, okay, what sheet is that?
That's page two and three. That's pages two and three.
So I need to mark that, okay.
My name is Priscilla Eshelman, I am fifty Label Street, directly to the east of forty-eight Level Street. In fact, our exterior walls are less than five feet apart in places, closer to two feet. My building is a two-family house built in nineteen seventeen, I am an owner-occupier. I live on the first floor with the intention to age in place. I rent the second floor to tenants, and I rely upon this rental income. Unfortunately, my tenants could not be here tonight, but because our apartments are nearly identical, my concerns also pertain to their unit. I've done quite a bit of research in preparation for tonight, as I am certain my quality of life and everything I have worked very hard to achieve are threatened. I've created a handout, and this poster board is to illustrate the points I wish to make, I'll make this as fast as I can. When I bought my house nearly three years ago, it was suffering from fifty years of deferred maintenance. It was so close to original, it still had gas lighting upstairs when the last owner moved out. I restored every part of my house, from replacing what I'm told was the oldest roof on Montclair, to asbestos abatement in the basement, and every inch in between. My attitude throughout this labor of love has been that I am shoring up the house for its next one hundred years. It means a lot to me that my house is within the proposed Christopher Street Historic District. I'd like to think I've added to both the historic charm of the neighborhood and property values. When I tell you why I strenuously object to the plans for forty-eight Label Street, I hope you'll see this through the lens of my true concern for the neighborhood and the future of my home. To be clear, we are talking about an absolutely massive addition. Please see pages two and three, and note the red and pink on these illustrations. The red indicates how much Mr. Florrick has proposed adding, while the pink indicates expansion towards the first floor footprint. The floor shows how close together our buildings are. Mr. Florrick's setback is less than three feet, and mine is just two feet on this side. That means our walls are five feet apart, and in the front even less, perhaps three and a half feet. Our eaves look to be just eighteen to twenty-four inches apart. I'd like to note that my house is built of a hundred-year-old wood, and I am extremely concerned about the risk of fire. No matter what Mr. Florrick builds his house with, it would make it more difficult to fight a fire at my house. The HPC's consultant wrote, "The commission finds that the proposed design is compatible with other residences in the Christopher Street potential historic resource area with respect to scale, massing, and height." I would say to that, that might be true in a vacuum of outer space, but not on tiny Label Street. The consultant's size comparison left out crucial context. My lives, my lot is almost twice as large as forty-eight Label Street, and as you know, the lots on Christopher Street and Montclair Avenue are much larger still, three times the size of my lot and six times the size of forty-eight Label Street. Another difference between our houses is our front yards. Forty-eight is asphalt, in contrast, I have a lush garden with more than a hundred native plants. Very importantly, my house is two rooms wide. The proposed design for forty-eight will only be one room wide, just sixteen feet across. However, the biggest difference may be that my house was built in nineteen seventeen, while forty-eight Label Street was built three years later in nineteen twenty. In preparing for this meeting, I have come to appreciate the ingenious, original design of forty-eight Label Street. Forty-eight was designed before the advent of zoning, and yet it is a sensible design that fits the spot. Even in the absence of zoning laws, it was built to sensitively relate to my own house, which predates it. I've learned that both forty-eight and fifty Label Street, and our immediate neighbors, were among the last houses built in our neighborhood. On page five, you can see how well-established Christopher Street and Montclair Avenues were in nineteen oh-six, while our land was bare of any buildings. By the way, if you don't know, our street is called Label Street because the U.S. Printing Office, which is shown on the map where the bread company and Richie Sesseros are now, was originally the Krump Label Factory, which was the biggest in the world. On page six, you can see how forty-eight was the final puzzle piece filling in the last spot of available land. And on page seven, I hope you will appreciate how carefully number forty-eight was designed to fit around my own home. As it was originally designed, forty-eight does not block any of the windows of four rooms of my house, which only have one window each. There are two of these rooms per apartment. These are the blue lines on page seven. Forty-eight does not block the light coming into two other rooms of my house that greatly benefit from this light, especially in the afternoon, that is the red line, and again, that's on two floors. Forty-eight only significantly blocks one window, which is the hallway window on my stair landing, which is the yellow line. If the proposed application is approved, the loss of light in my west-facing windows could be wicked catastrophic. Page eight shows afternoon sun on my west-facing wall. Now picture instead a solid wall taller than my second story, five feet from my windows, blocking all sunlight. I just have to say again, these are rooms which only have one window. As it is, I only get light on the first floor over the roof of the first story of forty-eight, which you can see in the bottom photo on page eight. Note the size of the air conditioner, how very close our buildings are. If this application is approved, it will throw my first-floor apartment into complete darkness, it's low light as it is, and it would completely change the sunny charm of my second-floor apartment, making it much less desirable to tenants. Mr. Florrick's plan at the front of forty-eight will also negatively impact my house and detract from what was a thoughtfully-designed streetscape. Please see page nine. I took this photo in the late afternoon as the sun moved towards setting on the other side of forty-eight. Picture how extending the second floor of forty-eight in the front will block light into my tenants' upstairs sunroom, casting a shadow over these windows in the afternoon, and even into their living room in the late afternoon. I don't know if the zoning board considers views, but the loss of the view of the hills and sunsets would be keenly felt. Extending forty-eight in the front will also block light all day long into my first-floor sunroom window which faces my porch, and it would create, create an oppressive overhang over my front porch. I contend it's not an accident forty-eight has a second-floor setback. Page nine shows how the fronts of forty-eight, fifty, and fifty-four Label Street all align from our first four sunrooms and front porches to our second-floor setbacks. The front door of forty-eight and mine are mirror images, which is especially obvious when standing on my front porch. It is a harmonious, intentional design which does not block light into my windows. Today, of course, forty-eight Label Street could not be built at all, even in its present diminutive size. There's even less justification to enlarge it. This plan requires variances, requires variances in every direction except subterranean. I don't believe C1 variances apply because any hardship is self-created. The new owner knew, the new owner knew full well what he was buying, he was in contract twice to buy this property, and he has never spent the night there. He has not uncovered any new information about the house. This is not my elderly former neighbor trying to install an elevator, it's someone trying to squeeze ten pounds of potatoes into a five-pound bag, four floors of living in a shell sixteen feet wide. I don't believe C2 variances are justified either. The proposed design will be a scar in the otherwise completely intact historic fabric of our neighborhood. Although my home is not on the grand scale or refined design of the large houses on Montclair Avenue and Christopher Street, I have done all that I can to add to the neighborhood's history and charm. I hired a paint consultant to help me select a historic paint scheme using an authentic nineteen seventeen palette. I had thirty-nine historically appropriate windows custom-made. I reshingled in Cedar Shake. I designed an arts-and-crafts-style front porch and found a carpenter to build it. I terraced my front garden with a traditional arts-and-crafts rock wall. Every touch I've given my house has been to make it last and to make it authentic. The proposed design endangers everything I have worked so hard to achieve in terms of protecting my home's integrity for the next one hundred years and making it a home I can age in place with income. If built as planned, forty-eight will make my second-floor flat much less desirable to tenants, it will ruin my quality of life, and it will decimate my property values. Zoning exists for a reason, and I am asking you to uphold your well-honed standards to deny this application. Each one of the requested variances will directly negatively impact my quality of life and my tenants. Forty-eight Label Street is non-conforming as it is, and the proposed addition exacerbates this. Treating this special home as a blank slate, as if the tiny spot of land it sits on is a slot machine, sets a dangerous precedent, one which will be highly visible. See page ten, we're practically at the Walnut Train Street, Street Train Station in plain view of communities and farmers' market shoppers. Forty-eight Label Street was and is a condo alternative that could be absolutely darling in its present dimensions. that could be absolutely darling in its present dimensions. My late neighbor told me that when he and his wife were house hunting, quote, "She fell in love with it and no other house would do," so he bought it for her. It was a cozy home for the two of them and that is its highest and best use for this property today. New shingles and flower boxes would go a long way toward making it a charming, courting, and important part of the neighborhood. The proposed building is none of those things. It's merely crass and exploitive. Every contractor in Essex County looked at this house and passed. Mr. Florrick has not discovered a portal to another dimension in which a massive three-story, 16-foot-wide house with no setback makes sense. I am begging you to deny this application. Thank you.
Any other members of the audience who have either comments, questions, testimony concerning the application? Mr. Trumbullack, do you want any testimony in response to anything that's been said?
Is there anything you wanted to say in response to? I mean, I can address a lot of the issues, but do you want to say anything in response to comments?
I mean, this is a house for a young couple to move into and grow with. I mean, I think it will, I think it'll, to contrast what Priscilla said, I think it would raise the property values by being next to a nice house. And, um...
Yeah, if you want to say.
Mr. Trumbullack?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly understand some of Ms. Eshelman's concerns and her house certainly is beautiful. She's spent a lot of time and effort and care in restoring it. My client's house clearly doesn't compare to it. It's not very attractive right now. It's pretty unsightly. It certainly doesn't add anything to the neighborhood in its existing condition. My client intends to perform substantial renovations to improve it, to make it look nicer, more attractive. He's going to live in the house, hopefully with a family, and he wants to improve it. He also needs to expand it in order to make it more livable for a family. Now, I understand Ms. Eshelman doesn't like the design. HPC doesn't care for the design. My client's willing to go back and work with HPC to come up with a suitable design that satisfies HPC and allows this project to proceed and the house to be substantially improved from its current condition. Now, I don't think it's a massive addition, as Ms. Eshelman suggests. I think there will be certainly positive impacts. And I think the only true concern, the only real variance that she is concerned about is the side yard that impacts on her house. Now, admittedly, there will be an impact upon light and air, but if you look at the existing condition, there's not much light and air there now. And it is, you know, we're talking about the westerly exposure of her house, which wouldn't get much sunlight in any event. Well, my client could, I assume, if it matters, shrink the third-floor addition back three feet, which would comply with the six-foot setback requirement, and eliminate that variance, which again, I think is the only variance, I believe, that really has an impact upon the neighbor. But that, I assume, could be done and eliminate that variance. And I don't know that going from three feet to six feet is going to have a dramatic effect on light and air, but it would comply with the six-foot setback requirement of the zoning ordinance. I also think her concern about the location of the air conditioning, condenser units is a legitimate one. I actually discussed that with my client just before the meeting and he would be agreeable, correct me if I'm wrong, John, to relocating those units on the other side of the property where there's a much greater setback between the house and the adjoining house to the west. So that would address that concern. So, I mean, again, this is a very unusual property, given its size and then the existing nonconformities. I think, you know, my client should be allowed to reasonably expand the house, at the same time, improve it visually, make it much more attractive than the current house, again, with the oversight of the HPC, who, by the way, has more or less approved the scale and the height of the building. So I think the variances are justified under, really, C1, given the existing constraints of the property and the existing nonconformities. And the only detrimental impact to the neighbor potentially is the third-floor expansion and the effect on that side yard, which again, we would be willing to go back and try to narrow the third-floor addition so that we would have a compliant six-foot setback for the third floor of the expanded house. So I think taking everything into consideration, I think the variances are justified under C1, subject to the conditions that we've already agreed to and I've just mentioned in my comments. However, the board approved the application as submitted.
I mean, it is a tight lot. There's no doubt about it. It is 24 by 70 feet. It's not your standard lot in this town whatsoever. And I get the need of making it better for family and for you moving forward. I'm in favor of this with the changes or the idea of Mr. Trumbullack scaling back that addition. And I will wait to see what my colleagues have to say.
Agreed. There's no doubt that this is definitely an undersized lot and I know this property was on the market for a while and for precisely the reason that it's an undersized lot and it's a very small home. So I understand the need to expand it. And I also understand that HPC's concerns with the exterior finishes. I personally happen to like the design as presented and I hope that there's some compromise that you can come to with the HPC that retains some of the character that you're trying to bring here, as well as fulfill the requirements of the district that you're in. I would be in favor of this application with the changes that Mr. Trumbullack discussed earlier.
I understand this is a very difficult situation. You are limited with the space that you're required. I personally like the design and the changes that you're proposing. However, I am considerate about the effect to your neighbor and I would cannot approve that based on just the fact that you're essentially blacking out your neighbor's property as presented on page eight, at least in that photo. So I would like to see what, how much light that does provide with the performing to that setback, the six feet. I would want to see that before I would approve this. But other than that factor, the designs on their own, I would be in favor of, but not the effect on your neighbor.
The design presented to us with these drawings that we got tonight in the application is an attractive building. It'll look great. I just don't think that this design is suited for this lot. I think what we have to have is a modification and some of the modifications that have been suggested by the HPC and some of the modifications suggested by Mr. Trumbullack have to be considered before I would approve this application as presented. Therefore, at this point, I would be against this application.
That was kind of a tough one here. I like the way the house looks, but I don't like the effect it has on the neighbor. I'm not really in agreement with the Historic Commission. I think it's a nice design. However, I think I'm going to have to say no for now because I'd like to see if you could do more to preserve the neighbor's space and still, you know, expand the house to the way you want it, you know, with the number of bedrooms and that type of thing. But I do think it's a very small lot. And if your lot was the same size as your neighbor's, I'd approve it, but it's not. So that would be my opinion for now.
I'm listening to, you know, my colleagues. In terms of the design, I'm not in love with the design personally. However, I can see that you really have made an effort in terms of the design to try to keep it somewhat in character with the other houses in the neighborhood. And so I appreciate that. I think the presentation of windows on the front frankly detract from it appearing as though it is consistent with the other period houses in that neighborhood. So were this to go through, I would point it out for consideration. With that said, I'm wondering if consideration has been given to ways of expanding it as a two-story house. You know, just looking at what has been presented in terms of the size of the lot with the deck in the back, I know it has to be a very small yard space in the back. Whether or not you can gain anything by extending the house first floor and second floor further back in order to capture some of what you're trying to create on that third floor. Because I do think that what your neighbor has articulated in terms of the amount of investment that she has made to preserve the historical character of her property and of the neighborhood is certainly something that has to be respected and is something that I certainly consider to be very important and I'm sure that you do as well. Were you in opposite places in terms of, were you living in her house and someone was looking to expand this property next door? So I do think that light matters. And I think the absence of light is important. I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that there doesn't seem to be as much of a consciousness about the fact that there is an existing window on your property that looks onto her house. And so therefore, again, what that impact is like, given the proximity of the houses to each other. So at this point, I would not be able to support this as it is presented.
So I think, you know, we're confronted recently with a number of three-story applications and, you know, ever since the ordinance was changed a good number of years ago to limit houses to two and a half stories, I've been observing a lot around town and there are, other than some homes on the side of the mountain, that end up having three or sometimes four stories due to the slope. You know, there are astonishing number of two and two and a half stories. But I think that the important consideration for me here in terms of the... And when we've had the three stories, we've, you know, generally reduced what's been proposed, so it's keeping with a dormer approach and having less of an impact. But, you know, one of the main purposes of zoning, as Mr. Church had said, you know, is light and air and, you know, this clearly is going to have a... A third story here is going to clearly have a dramatic impact on the adjoining property. And I, you know, the rationale for having the two and a half-story limit is, you know, I can't come to any other conclusion that, you know, that this would be a substantial... The third story would be a substantial detriment to the zone plan and have the negative impact on the neighboring property. I, you know, if... The question in my mind is, I think, you know, clearly there is a justification for the yard variances based on the existing house encroaching on all lots. You know, I was somewhat intrigued by Mr. Trumbullack's suggestion about conforming to six feet on the one side and exactly what that would look like. But I, you know, I think, you know, so there... You know, and I'm not sure, we've had somewhat diverse opinions. I mean, one approach would be to deny the third-floor variance, grant the other variances and... But my concern, and it ties in with some of the issues raised by the Historic Preservation Commission, I'm not sure what it would look like. I mean, I think it is just simply too different. I don't want to... I guess this is a question for Mr. Sullivan and I don't know where other board members are. I don't want to do res judicata on yard variances that we might be willing to grant. But I'm not sure I want to approve those now and without seeing what the design looks like either. And so if we... Can we simply deny it based on the third story and not take a position on the other variances? Is that an acceptable...
Yeah, I think the other thing is to give the applicant the opportunity to revise the plan to address the concerns of the board. Then you'd know exactly what you're looking at and not have to require them to come back and make arguments about res judicata.
Yeah, it's exactly what I was going to propose, Mr. Chairman. We'd like the opportunity to come back with revised plans, try to address the overall design. At the same time, try to come up with something that would be acceptable to HPC. Also, reduce the size of the third floor or some other configuration to address the issues we've heard. Because I think, from what I've heard from several people is, you know, they'd like to see what this would look like. They might be inclined to approve it, but not without seeing the actual plan revision. So we'd like to, an opportunity to address these concerns and come back to you, I guess, at the next meeting. All right, okay. So two things. I definitely want you to show the revised design to the Historic Preservation Commission before you come back because I... We may not be in full agreement with Historic Preservation Commission, but I want their input on the new design. So I don't know how that impacts the timing of your being back. Well, our next meeting is the first week in December and I don't, we're pretty much set for that. And we'll take a break until, I'll say, 7:00 after the next applicant can get all set up, so we can resume, so we return.
It was included as part of it.
Otherwise, chances are all marked out.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Yeah, I just, I'm going to be cleaning.
Is there anything you can need to--
Because I don't have, I think I finished. So Billy goes with the company.
The second story is blocked, all the lights.
So, yeah, this is going to have to be what is discussed at first. Second story is by right.
No matter what.
Even if he set it back six feet, he could build a fourth story on this property.
And the front blocking light.
If he did an addition at the rear, that was six feet off. He could certainly do that, would he, by right, the addition. About the application.
Well, just in general.
The zoning ordinance is all of that law. Certainly take a read through that. Everyone is eligible. Mr. Allen, who wasn't ready, he, watch the video.
Try to stay away.
Thank you. That wasn't very comfortable. That was a little, it was 10:30.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's a record for me. I've never started that way.
We've been here until 1:00.
I heard.
Everyone is eligible. Mr. Allen, who wasn't ready, he, watch the video.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Try to stay away.
Thank you. That wasn't very comfortable. That was a little, it was 10:30.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's a record for me. I've never started that way.
We've been here until 1:00.
I heard.
Everyone is eligible. Mr. Allen, who wasn't ready, he, watch the video.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Try to stay away.
Thank you. That wasn't very comfortable. That was a little--
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's a record for me. I've never started that way.
We've been here until 1:00.
I heard.
Everyone is eligible. Mr. Allen, who wasn't ready, he, watch the video.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Try to stay away.
Thank you. That wasn't very comfortable. That was a little--
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's a record for me. I've never started that way.
We've been here until 1:00.
I heard.
Everyone is eligible. Mr. Allen, who wasn't ready, he, watch the video.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Try to stay away.
Thank you. That wasn't very comfortable. That was a little--
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's a record for me. I've never started that way.
We've been here until 1:00.
I heard.
Hmm.
That's correct. Lastly, at the last hearing, we heard from our architect, Mr. Chavestic, who is seated to my left tonight. There was a slight error in the plans. The board did not have the correct fourth page of his plan showing the Walnut Street elevation. We've since submitted revised plans, which I assume the board has, and some other changes were made to those plans from the suggestions from the board and from the HPC. So, you know, we will go over those changes tonight. The board also requested at the last meeting to hear some testimony from our landscape architect, who was not in attendance last time. He is here tonight, so I will present him after we finish with the architect. And then we'll finish up with our professional planner, who's here tonight as well. So if there are any questions, if not, I will begin with Mr. Chavestic?
Chavestic, yes.
Okay. Okay, so why don't you?
Mr. Chavestic, you were sworn in at the proceeding hearing. You understand you're still under oath.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Perfect. So, okay, Mr. Chavestic, at the last board meeting, you were provided a lot of feedback regarding the design of the townhomes, especially the elevation on the Walnut Street side, which we didn't have that planned at the last time. So can you just go through the changes you've made to the plan? And then we'll also address the HPC comments as well.
Okay. The first sheet I have is the Valley Road elevation and the Walnut Street side.
Mr. Chavestic, can you speak up, please?
Sure. The Valley Road side, the changes I made were, there was a comment last time about I had vents on these little gable roofs, and they suggested putting windows in there. So I changed them to round windows with drills in them. And then there was another suggestion to put brackets under the overhangs on the opposite ends of the building, so I added the brackets. Another change was part of the historic commission's idea. I changed the doors to simpler doors, panel wood doors. I made the roof smaller over the overhang of the doors. I lowered the base molding down so it didn't line up with the windows at the bottom. And I made the dormers bigger. It was a request to make the dormers bigger, so I made them bigger. And then on the, that takes care of the Valley Road side. And then the Walnut Street side, I did the same thing with the door. I matched the other doors on the other side. I made the roof smaller and made it more of a simpler for door, of a raised panel door. And then I added a double window in the middle, which before was a single window. And then on the next sheet, all the other two elevations, one's-
Mr. Chavestic, what sheet are you referring to? Just so we know.
This is sheet number three. It's the driveway side. I call it the driveway elevation and then the parking lot elevation. So the driveway side, the last time, the garage doors were not lined up with the sliding doors that go out to the balcony, so I lined them up. And then I, the base trim, I lined it up with the bottom of the window. It was higher before, so I lowered that. And I made the dormers bigger also on the roof. And then the other elevation wasn't changed that much, just basically the dormer was bigger. That was really the only change with that side. Pretty much that was the major changes.
Okay. And now, one of the primary concerns of the board was the Walnut Street elevation, and to make that look more like a front of the building, because that would be facing Walnut Street. This is a design that we submitted with our current package. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you, we've also had an opportunity to discuss with the applicant some additional designs that the board may want to consider and that you prepared. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we show that? It's just another exhibit, just to give an idea of some other possible designs. And we can mark that, because that's not in your package.
Yeah, last time-
Here. Why don't you mark that? I believe we're at A3?
That's correct.
Counselor? All right, so why don't you just tell-
We have a good one down.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I do have-
What I did was I made four different views of the Walnut Street side, because I know you were very concerned about it. So just alternate ideas, so at least you could see some different ideas of that side.
I have a few.
I made six more copies.
Just explain what A3 is and the date.
The date is November 9th, 2019. Yeah, it's just four elevation views of the Walnut Street side. The top-left one is the one I proposed originally, you know, that I just showed you a minute ago. And then there's number two, three, and four are all tents. Number two, basically, it's the same as number one, except I added like a porch. I tried to mimic a porch with columns on it. You see, there's a roof, columns, and there'll be a base at the bottom, like a slate base, to make it look like a porch. And then number three, basically, I took the bottom door out and just put a window in there, because I think there was a concern last time why they have a door there, because that door goes into the garage. So just to get an idea what that looks like. And then number four, what I did was I left the door and I made the double window and the single window like a bay that sticks out, just six inches to give it some depth. And I brought that up to a hip roof at the top, and I took the dormer out on that side, just to give another idea what that may look like. So it's just four different alternatives for the side of Walnut Street side.
And that we would be willing to implement any of these alternatives with the HPC's input or with the board's input?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions for Mr. Chavestic, so I'll leave it to the board.
Just so the interior basically stayed the same. I just had to shift some windows a little bit here and there, so I, you know, as I moved them on the exterior, I had to move them on the interior. The layout inside is the same.
The discussion at the last meeting, yes, was about the Walnut Street side of the building that was proposed. My question is this. The doors that you have put in, it was in the original and number two and number four, you say they go into the garage. What garage do they go into? The last apartments, the last unit's garage or?
I'll show you. If you look at the plan view, the ground floor plan, you see the door all the way to the left? That's that view we're looking at. So I added the door to try to make it look like a front of a building. So it goes into the side of the garage. They have a garage door that they pull in-
Right.
And they have another door they can go in. And then from there, they go inside-
But that's the only unit that utilized that door?
Yes.
There is no, just that unit?
That's correct. Thank you. Yeah, because you see the other side, it's, I couldn't put a door there. I don't think it would be a good spot for a door anywhere.
Other questions, members of the board?
Just an observation. On page three of five. Right, so the rendition on the bottom, I was looking at the alignment of the windows, and they're really not aligned. So is that just an error of the drawing?
No, that's not an error.
You will do, you will make sure that that's-
You mean that the dormer, the windows-
If you look at the dormer and then you look at the-
Right, I see that.
The window, the middle window, it's off center.
Let me just check if I can move it.
Okay.
It's probably about six inches off.
Yeah. And so then the window that is beneath it, would it, that also, you know, it looks like the two lower windows are aligned, but they're out of alignment with the dormer.
Right, I could push those two windows over-
So you can push both of those-
Right with the dormer. Yeah, that's no problem. Inside, they're in the bathroom, so I put them in the normal place where they fit.
Okay.
To move it over a little bit would hurt.
All right.
Just, so your testimony is that for conditions two through six in the historic preservation recommendation, you're complying with all of those? The revised plans comply with all of those?
Yes.
Other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience with comments, questions on the application?
State your name and address. This is just questions of this witness. You have to wait till all the witnesses testify if you want to make a statement at the end.
Oh, okay.
No questions?
No, no questions.
Want to call your, any other members of the audience with questions for this witness?
Yeah, I'd like to call Mr. Bradley Muman.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
State your name, spell your last.
My name is Bradley Muman, N-E-U-M-A-N-N.
And your address?
It's Seven Letrock Court, Mars Plains, New Jersey. Let me just make sure there's the I. The light's on, and it's orange. It's on. If you could use the one at the table. You'll have to push the button to turn it on. There you go.
Okay. Mr. Muman, can you just give the board the benefit of your educational and employment background and qualifications?
Sure. Graduate, 1983 from Rutgers, bachelor's in landscape architecture. Eighty-six, I was certified, which then became licensing in New Jersey, so that's been uninterrupted since that point. And I've worked in various positions as a landscape architect since then. Own my own firm or partner in firms since 1996. And I've testified before various boards in North and New Jersey primarily.
And you've been qualified as an expert landscape architect?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to offer Mr. Muman as a landscape architect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Muman, the last meeting, there were some questions regarding landscape architecture, but why don't you take us through your plan, and then you could address the questions from the board?
Sure, sure. And I'm aware there's a review letter after this was submitted, so we're kind of taking one step back in time. So this is the plan before you, is the plan that was submitted, which is dated eight to 2019. And what I did is I took the image of the design area, and I blew that up just so we could refer to it. And so that would be a new exhibit. That's called Landscape Exhibits, dated 11-13, and it's, the notice, based on landscape plan dated eight to 2019.
Okay, why don't we mark that A4?
So we have the building, we have Valley Road, Walnut Street, and the driveway parking area that continues in a loop around the site. And so we have several pieces to the landscape design. One is, we have some kind of serpentine lawn, kind of a flowing lawn along the front. And then we have some perennial beds with then a hedge behind that, so some layering, and then some accenting with these magnolia trees that will accent the building. And then we have a Cusa dogwood out here on the lawn area. And in addition to that, and I should just mention, these are some, the small little leaf holly that we're using as the hedge along the front, along the building.
Excuse me, Brad.
Sure. Hello. Okay, great. And in addition to that, we have some evergreen viburnum here, which will provide some buffering to the parking area. And then along the side, we have the, there's a fence that's noted on the site plan for some buffering. So then as an accent to that, really on the inside, we have a decorative gravel border along that, and the whole series, like clumps of yucca plants, which is a evergreen, evergreen kind of spiky shrub. So that's kind of repeated all the way through here.
I believe the board has some questions about plantings. Yeah, why don't we, okay, why don't you address the board?
All right, so then, since this was submitted, I did review your, the October 15th letter from Suburban Consulting. And then really, number 12 is regarding the landscape plan. And in that paragraph, it just notes what I just explained, and there was two items that I should clarify. So one is, plan denotes one 20-inch in caliber tree to be removed, and please provide testimony to indicate which planting is designated for its onsite replacement. And then secondly, it's requesting testimony regarding the plant schedule and which plants are native to Montclair. So specifically, I know in your ordinance, it talks about native plants and also talks about plants that are suited to Montclair. It also mentions native plants are encouraged, so in this case, we really don't have native plants, although we could certainly take the encouragement, and it might be nice to switch a few of these out for very similar plants. Oils are definitely suited and are regularly planted in Montclair. But just again, after reading the letter, and then when I see strongly encouraged, I am strongly encouraged. So we have some star magnolias, which could easily be switched out for some sweet bay magnolias. So it's a similar type of tree, small tree. I just brought something here that we could show that.
You'll need to mark that.
Okay, so this calls Virginia magnolia, sweet bay magnolia, exhibit A5. So this would be a small clumpy tree, as the star magnolia was. This is native to the area. It's a very beautiful plant, so there's really, you know, that's like, it's a fine substitution. And then we would also have that factor involved, have a native plant.
Where would that be substituted?
So we have four star magnolias, so we would replace them in kind with the star magnolia. So it'd be a magnolia virginiana instead of the magnolia stalata. So we'd get some native there. And then in addition to that, we did take into consideration the replacement tree. And then there are some specifics in the ordinance about size and types of trees for the tree replacement, which is typically one tree is replaced for one that's coming out. So here's where the tree's coming out. And we thought that maybe we'd replace the dogwood tree with something a little different, which would be this willow, so Quercus fellos.
Let's mark that as well.
Make that a P.
That's A6?
A6, yes.
A6. So the nice thing about this tree is, although it's an oak, it doesn't really get as large as your typical oak would be. It creates, has a nice habit. It doesn't, it's very disease resistant, as if you're aware, some of the oaks now have problems. And the thing I like best is the leaves, where the name comes as willow, you don't have a large leaf, like a large big oak or maple leaf that's matting down on lawns or people are slipping on. These tend to fall off, and they kind of, because they're smaller, they kind of crinkle up very quickly. So in terms of maintenance and safety, it's a lot better. So it's really a perfect street-type tree, and we've been using it a lot in that fashion. So, and that's native, so that, we would like to make that change with the Cusa dogwood. And then I think that would really be within the spirit of the ordinance and an improvement to the plan as well.
Okay. And with the proposed landscaping on the Walnut Street facade of the building, is that going to basically give some mitigation to that side in terms of view?
Well, certainly will, but already on that view, you have two trees kind of framing that building. They're smaller trees. And then really, the oak tree has a very nice canopy, so it's very, very softened.
Okay. And that'll give it a residential-
And it's a residential feel. I mean, we don't want to plant like a hedge of pines in front of the building. I don't, you know, we're talking about character and buffering and scenic quality. So I think this is, this achieves all of those.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Muman. No further questions this way.
And those magnolias that you're asking, the native ones, the height on those, please?
Okay. The height on, let's see, I specified. We're specifying five to six foot on the star, so these would be about a six to seven foot height. That would be. The star magnolias, the ones that we specified are five to six foot, these would typically be a six to seven foot height.
Would these five trees that you're planting, would they all drop their leaves?
Yes. Yes, we have the evergreen hedge along the front, evergreen shrubs here, which get about, you know, about six foot high. And then we have the yucca plants, which are evergreen. So we have a mix of both of those types, but along the building, that would be deciduous. The clumpy nature of the magnolia, though, is actually a winter interest, so it's not, doesn't disappear. You still have some structure. So if you had like a light, not that we're planting it, but it's like a kind of tree you'd lit in the winter, it would still be effective in the winter. There'd still be some positive landscape attribute.
Other questions from members of the board?
Question, isn't willow oak normally found in low areas more typically and doesn't do as well in plant areas?
We've actually been using them in a lot of areas, and then they've been using them a lot in the city as well. So we've had a lot of good experience with them right now.
How long have they been planted in?
I've, I have, like this, I mean, I took this picture. This is in cloister, so, and there's a whole line of them along that street, so they've probably been in 15 years. And I mean, they're probably the, the reason I stopped and got out in traffic is because it's the best tree on the street. There's a lot of other oaks, like a pin oak, I have disease problems, there's maples, like there's so many things.
I mean, there are a lot of advantage, I mean, the smaller leaves, I mean, they're, I understand some of the advantages. It's just I'm concerned about long-term survivability, and, you know, this is not somebody's front yard where it'll be watered all the time.
Right. In my experience, what I've seen and what I've read, this is on our list of the trees that we want to be promoting, not, because there's a lot of other things that are in decline, unfortunately. It's a tough time right now.
Other questions from members of the board? Mr. Church?
To plants that you put in, the maintenance, like watering and fertilizing or anything like that, could anything be done to make that like a permanent thing, like soaker rope, soaker hoses underneath there? Or you plan on doing anything as far as-
We didn't specify irrigation system, although I would suggest it, but it's not that big of a planting where, I mean, it could be, it could be watered with, you know, by the maintenance people. Clearly, if, when it's installed, it would, at minimum, it would have what you say is like the soaker hose. Typically, on a permanent irrigation system, the soakers are really dripped, because they, the soaker hoses, they don't last that long.
Yeah.
But the drip, because they have a pressure compensating device, they only release a little bit of the pressure, so you're kind of dripping things. So most of this would be suitable for a drip, actually. That's very ecological. You're not just blasting everything, other than the lawn would have to be sprayed.
Would that be considered, then, as you put those in?
It would be a suggestion, but again, you know, if we're talking about a large site, planting beds within parking areas or tremendous areas of lawn, it gets to the point where you physically can't water it by hand. But something like this is actually, I think it could go either way. I mean, clearly, it has to be maintained to-
What about an automatic irrigation system that goes on a certain-
Well, that's what I meant by water, that's what I meant, so I would suggest that, but in a larger project, I think you would have to require it. But in something like this, it's small enough, really, one person could water it fairly easily, so it's actually feasible to do it either way. Generally, these plants, once they are in and take hold, you're really not going to need to do a lot of watering. They're very tough. I mean, yucca, you know, once it's established, you really, really can't, that's a ziriskate plant. The magnolias are very tough. The hollies are very tough.
Other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? Do you want to call your next witness?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness is David Karlebach.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
David Karlebach, K-A-R-L-E-B-A-C-H. The address is 96 Linwood Plaza, Borley, New Jersey.
Mr. Karlebach, if you could just turn on the, yeah, that's it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Karlebach, can you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Yes, I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner, and I have been for 25 years. I previously qualified and testified before both the Montclair Planning Board and Board of Adjustment.
And is your license current?
Yes, it is.
Accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Karlebach, can you just please tell us what the scope of your retention was in this matter?
Certainly. I performed a planning analysis to determine whether or not there are sufficient reasons for the granting of the variances. The application does require a use variance and two C variances, so I did conduct that analysis.
Okay, and what did you do in preparation of your testimony tonight?
Well, I reviewed all of the application materials, including the architectural drawings, the site plan drawing. I reviewed the municipal zoning ordinance and master plan. I've also looked at the site and the surrounding area, and I also collaborated in the preparation of a planning exhibit.
Okay. And you conducted a planning analysis of this project, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay. So can you give the board now the benefit of your findings and conclusions with respect to the proposed project that the board is now considering?
Certainly. First, what I'd like to do is entertain a discussion about this particular site and some of the surrounding area, and I think it's best if I just distribute this exhibit now, which will enter into evidence as-
A7?
A7. I'm going to mark one as A7.
I'll hand it out. No, I'll hand it out.
Okay. A7 is a series of four sheets. The first sheet is an aerial photograph of the site and the surrounding area, and the following sheets, two, three, and four, are just photographs of both this site and some of the surrounding land uses. So while that's being passed around, I'll just describe the very first sheet, sheet one, which is a little unconventional, because the north doesn't point towards the top of the page, it points towards the bottom left of the page. An overlaying on this aerial photograph are a few different colors. An overlaying on this aerial photograph are a few different colors. The orange rectangle in the center of the page is the subject property. And then the very fine white lines are actually individual tax map lots. The red lines show the zone boundary line. And then the photo locations are indicated in blue and the directions from which the photographs were taken. So the first sheet again just shows you a lot about the various types of land uses in the area. They are varied. The zoning does permit a wide variety of land uses. And you can see in the center of the drawing, the lot. It's a 10,143 square foot lot where the zone only requires a 6,000 square foot lot. It is a corner lot, so it does have two front yards. And now if you look at page two, which is shows some of the surrounding land uses, you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, photograph three, is showing us the medical office directly across the street. In the bottom right-hand corner is the subject property. And you can see a portion of this building has been destroyed by fire. So it is partially destroyed. Photo location two is just showing a nearby residence that's quite well buffered by the existing vegetation. On the next page, which is page three, in the upper left is the Girl Scout Residence and Day Camp, which is also opposite the site. Photograph number seven is the abutting land use to the, I believe that's to the northeast, and that's the School of Rock. And then further northeast and photograph number eight are a series of retail stores right along Valley. I don't want to go through each and every photograph, but in the bottom left-hand photograph of sheet four is as we're getting towards the end of the street. And there you can see, I guess, the very beginning of, what is it, Tierney's Pub, I believe it is. And then beyond Tierney's Pub, off the page would be the Quick Check Shopping Center. So that tells you a little bit about this area in terms of the land uses. Now I said this does require use variance because it's in an R2 zone. Two-family homes are permitted. Townhomes are not permitted. And there are two C variances. I should note that the C variance for exceeding the maximum fence height, that has been remedied. That now complies. So we're left with two variances, two C variances. One has to do with just the number of stories. The zone permits two and a half stories. This building is a full three stories. So even though the height is compliant in terms of the elevation, it doesn't comply in terms of stories. And then finally, there's front yard setback variance. I'll remind the board this has two front yards, okay? So the abbreviated setback occurs along Valley. That's 9.4 feet proposed where 25 feet is required.
Eight point four feet, I believe.
I'm sorry, is that right? Is it eight point four? I apologize.
Yeah.
And then we are compliant with the setback along Walnut. So one front yard setback variance. Now in terms of planning issues, I'll remind the board that this is a community that is continuously evaluating its land use policies. And as part of my review of this application, I did review the 2011 Montclair Unified Land Use and Circulation Master Plan element. And in this report, it indicated the following needs according to residents. And I apologize for reading, but I think these are quite important notations in that document. Paragraph two, because of rapidly rising housing costs, it is becoming less viable for residents to live their whole lives in Montclair and less likely that future generations can choose to stay in Montclair. In many ways, the idea of affordable housing is to allow young people to raise family in the communities where they grow up, for empty nesters and seniors to stay near where they, they and their families have lived for generations. So that was one comment. Another one in paragraph three, there isn't enough diversity in terms of the types and price ranges of housing available in Montclair. And another concern was many current residents who want to stay in Montclair after their children leave the house face a lack of options in town for downsizing, that is moving to a smaller home. So the planning findings are that the applicant is proposing the type of units that are most needed in Montclair. That is, those are the units that are in the least supply in the township. According to American Fact Finder and the U.S. Census, approximately 2.8% of the township's units are one-family attached dwellings. So this is the lowest percentage of any type of housing style in the township. And then the following policy was also placed in the 2015 master plan. And that policy is to encourage a mix of housing types to fit the needs of all households. And it goes on to specify non-family households, seniors, low income, et cetera. The land use section of your 2015 master plan places the subject property within the R2 zone, and it is discussed in the Valley Van Vleck focus area. So I want to talk about that focus area. There are very specific recommendations. One recommendation is that the two-family zone adjoining the Valley Van Vleck Business District will remain a two-family zone. This area is located on the east side of Valley Road, beginning at Van Vleck Street and continuing north past James Street. There is to be no change from the existing zoning status. So again, it's situated in the R2 zoning classification and there's no change to that. Now, I think this is more significant. It talks about scattered site redevelopment areas. Scattered site redevelopment program. Establish a scattered site redevelopment program to address eyesore properties that negatively impact neighborhoods concentrating on problem properties on James Street and Valley Road. Now this property wasn't considered for rezoning or consideration in a redevelopment area. And I have a feeling that possibly it's because of the incorrect designation in the existing land use map. It's designated on land use map as being less, four unit or less residential use. And we know that not to be true. It's more than four units. It's actually 10 units. So that could have been a reason why it wasn't designated for reclassification. Now let's talk about the positive criteria and specifically particular suitability. I think that the site is particularly well-suited for a less intensive residential use. Again, removing it from 10 dwelling units down to three dwelling units. And this site is located immediately adjacent to the neighborhood commercial zone, which is the NC zone. And that's shown on the very first page of my exhibit. And it's also located adjacent to the OR3 district. So in this context, this property, this subject property, is the only one that adjoins both those districts, okay? The NC district permits apartments on upper floors at a density of 28 dwelling units per acre. The OR3 district permits apartments at 18 units per acre. And townhouses, townhouses at densities ranging from 10 to 12 dwelling units per acre. So I would note that the proposed density is at 12.8 dwelling units per acre. The implied density for the R2 zone, when evaluating two-family dwellings, is 14.52 dwelling units per acre. So the proposed density is actually less than what the R2 would permit with the construction of a two-family home. And based upon the diversity of land uses in the area, I think a small townhouse project is particularly well-suited for this site. And I would further note, in the case of Price versus Hameji, the court found that a proposed development was particularly suited for the proposed use, in part because the site was nearby or adjacent to zones that allowed that particular use. And that's exactly what we have here. We have an R2 zone immediately abutting the NC zone, opposite the street from an OR3 zone. And we know townhomes are permitted in that OR3 zone. And because the site, I should say, the use exists, and it is a 10-unit boarding house, it's continued to exist as of right. Now this structure was only partially destroyed. And we know what the case law is. If it's partially destroyed, it can be rebuilt and used for its prior use, which is a boarding home. So let's just keep that in mind. It wasn't complete destruction. It was only partial destruction. So I think in this regard, this proposed three-unit development, I think better harmonizes with the area. It's certainly more consistent and more compatible with the other uses in the neighborhood, specifically with those homes in the R2 zone. And here we are proposing a functional reduction in the onsite household population. Again, 10 units down to three units. In terms of the bulk variances, consistent with case law, bulk variances are normally subsumed under the D variance. And I'm talking about the Palaio decision. Basically, the court in Palaio tells us that D variances and C variances cannot coexist. If the board is going to grant a D variance, it automatically subsums the C variances with it. So I think what the court is telling us is it's improper to take the bulk requirements for a use that's not permitted in the zone and apply those standards of the zone to that non-permitted use. If you had a gas station in a residential zone, you wouldn't apply the standards of a residence to a gas station. It would be improper. Regarding the front yard setback variance, you can see from the aerial, the very first page, that we are proposing a front yard setback that is consistent with the pattern of front yard setbacks along Valley Road, specifically those neighborhood commercial uses to the northeast. And although requiring a front yard variance, I think that this application does remove several existing non-conformities with regard to the side yard setback, okay? That's an existing non-conformity that's going to be eliminated. The rear yard setback, another variance, and the lot coverage. All of those are going to be corrected. So in my opinion, this represents a better zoning alternative. It continues that rhythm, that repetition of front yard setbacks that already exist on Valley. And it significantly increases the setback to the nearest residential dwelling to the southeast. You can see in that aerial photograph that there's virtually no setback adjoining the R2 zone. And now it's a significant setback. So we're allowing for more penetration of light, air, open space between these two structures. Regarding the number of stories, again, this is a variance for the number of stories, not for the height and feet. We do meet the height requirement in the zone of 35 feet. And I would further note that where townhomes are permitted in the OR3 district, a height of 40 feet is permitted in that zone, okay? That's the adjoining zone. And the abutting NC zone permits three stories. So this is certainly consistent and compatible with what's permitted in the adjoining zones. I would say this is not a substantial departure from the zone plan. We have a building that is compliant with regard to the height and feet, and it is a structure that has a pitched roof, okay? So it does have the, it does look like a residential structure. It's not a commercial building with a flat roof, which I think is what the ordinance is trying to eliminate. So for these reasons, I believe the application does meet or advance several important purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose A is promotion of the general welfare of the community by providing a type of housing that is most needed and in a location that's particularly well-suited for this use. And paragraph G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of land uses that meet the needs of citizens, New Jersey citizens. And I talked about the specific type of housing styles that are desirable as expressed in the 2015 master plan. And purpose E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of neighborhoods. And again, I told you how that this, the density at this location is very much consistent with the permitted density or the implied density in the R2 zone, okay? And it's also very much consistent with the densities that are permitted for townhomes in the adjoining zone. In terms of the negative criteria, I believe that these proposed variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. The proposal results in creating a use that is actually more consistent with the zone plan and a use that would better harmonize with the area. The site is located at the edge of two zone districts that permit significantly, I should say, significant intensity increases over what's proposed at this site. And the case law suggests that in such situations, the particularly suitability argument is met. And I'm again referring to that Price versus Hameji case. Adequate parking is going to be provided here. There's no parking variance. The maximum building coverage is being reduced, okay, from something that's currently non-compliant to a compliant lot coverage. And while the zoning infers?
That's building coverage.
Building coverage, correct. Building coverage. And while the zoning infers a density of 14.5 dwelling units per acre, we're only proposing 12.88 units per acre. So the number of persons on the site will reduce. It appears that the current use will result in, I should say, the proposed use will result in less intensity with a more stable resident population, and it should benefit the neighboring properties in that regard as well. In terms of the Medici reconciliation, the master plan identified the property as a residential four-family land use. And that is the same classification that's attributed to single-family homes. We know that to be untrue. It's not a four-family dwelling. It's actually much greater. It's actually a 10-unit housing development. So recommended rezoning of the site could not have been contemplated based upon the land classification in the master plan, okay? It was probably something that was just overlooked because of that improper or incorrect classification. And moreover, the master plan does recommend scattered site redevelopment of eyesore properties for this area, which is a recognized part of this proposal. So I believe that the granting of this D variance would not result in a detriment to the character of the area. But again, it's going to provide much-needed housing. And let's face it, new housing stock is the goal of virtually every suburban community. You can't pick up a master plan anywhere without finding that, that specific recommendation is to increase the amount of new housing stock. And again, growth is encouraged in this area. I think that this proposal fits squarely within the recommendations in the master plan. I think it's a very good project. It's very, again, for a small site such as this, it's a nice infill project. It removes a problematic building. And it's certainly going to improve the aesthetic quality of the site. It's going to take down an old building that's partially destroyed, replace it with a new building with modern architectural treatments, new paving, new landscaping, all of which are going to have an immediate impact on improving the visual quality of this site and better integrating it with its surroundings. Thank you.
Just one follow-up question. I know one of the concerns of the board was the Walnut Street beside. Considering the testimony from the architect and the landscaping that's proposed, do you believe in your opinion, like a passerby coming up Walnut, would this property seem out of character in terms of what they're going to see coming to that intersection?
No, it has very much a residential feel from, from all sides, I believe. I'm very much, you know, impressed by the architecture. And again, it does create, I'm going to walk up here. All this additional buffer, recognizing that this is an active driveway, but still, the original dwelling comes way out here where my finger is pointing. This is the lot line. Here's the edge of dwelling. So you have a nice physical separation. And again, those architectural treatments that I believe that the HPC was looking for.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Karlebach. I have no further questions for this witness.
So I guess I'm a little confused on the difference between the existing rear yard and the proposed rear yard. When you say the proposed is further away, what are you measuring to?
So, I guess I'm going to use this. So on a corner lot such as this, you take the narrowest dimension and then opposite that narrowest dimension is the rear yard. So this would be construed as the rear yard. And right now, that garage building comes within, I think, 3.7 feet of the rear property line. This is being the rear property line. And you can see the new dwelling is much, much further away. So that's it.
But the garage only needs to have a six-foot setback. I mean, it is slightly encroaching, but how far away is the house compared to the? the proposed townhouse?
How, I'm sorry, how far apart is the existing home?
The boarding home from the rear yard versus the proposed townhouses?
Oh, I don't have that. I'd have to look at the survey to come up with that. I have a survey.
I have a copy that was filed again.
Isn't it fair to say the townhouse is much closer to the rear yard than the existing boarding home is?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. And I understand this is a, you know, an accessory structure. I get it. But it is a rather large structure. It is a garage, and it does come, it does violate the, the rear yard setback. So I wasn't incorrect in saying that, that rear yard setback violation is being corrected. It is.
So you focus primarily on the existing development along Valley Road. What about the development along Walnut Street from, you know, say, well, say from Midland on up? What is the character of that development?
Well, it's just as the zone would indicate. I mean, the zone does allow two-family homes. They're, uh, single-family and two-family homes in various states of maintenance. I think the, you know, to, I would say that the building right next to this property, you know, abutting is in poor condition. As a matter of fact, I don't even know if it's occupied. If you look in the windows, it looks like it just has cardboard boxes piled in front of it. So I'm guessing this building is not occupied at the current time. So that, you know, the character of the area is certainly in terms of land use, single-family and two-family homes. In terms of how they are being maintained and utilized, I, I think that's questionable.
It's not really consistent with my observations. I drove by this morning just to double-check.
Yeah. I, I walked right up to this, the front of this home, and it was, it had stickers on the window. I don't know if they're currently working on-
But you do, the, the homes going up from Park Street, coming up from Midland, and several of whom have been recently renovated. I'm not sure, you know-
Well, if the question, if the question is, would this facade of the building be consistent with the architecture in, you know, in the R2 zone? I think it is. I mean, you have a very, the narrow point, or, you know, the narrow part of the building is facing out to Walnut Street. So you don't get the impression that this is a massive building from Walnut as you're walking down the street. And it's not a, a massive building. So again, I think the architect did go through the, the effort and the exercise of coming up with various schemes, you know, that would look appropriate to the, the R2 zone. I, I think that's been achieved. I don't think it looks like a, it no longer looks like a boarding house, for sure, and it's, it certainly has that residential feel about it.
The Historic Preservation Commission recommended doing a three-family versus a townhouse to fit in better with the neighborhood. Why do you think that's a improper conclusion?
Well, there's not, there's no one correct solution, you know, to any, I guess, planning problem, and not that this is a problem, but again, this was just, this was the program as developed by the applicant. It could be appropriate for a number of things. So I'm not limiting the possibility that this is only appropriate for townhomes or, you know, three-family dwellings. Certainly, there are other types of residential units that could be considered. And I, but the application is for this, you know, the three-town homes.
But if we were to follow the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission, and couldn't the applicant, I mean, create a three-unit house that, each with two bedrooms that would meet all the other objectives that you testified to in terms of having a, you know, allowing people to downsize and remain in town?
Mr. Chairman, I think that question may be more appropriately answered by the architect, because I think-
I'm asking from a planning perspective as to whether his, based on his planning testament, all the reasons he cited from the master plan, other than lack of townhouses in Montclair, but wouldn't all those other objectives be met by having a three-family house, each of the units having two bedrooms as is proposed here?
I, I just thought there may be some design obstacles.
I am asking a planning conclusion.
I understand.
Well, again, I, the, the program was developed by the applicant. That's the proposal before the board. It's not for a three-family home. Whether or not that's a viable, you know, alternative, I'm not a real estate expert, so I can't tell you if that, again, is a viable alternative for the property.
I don't think you talked about value of real estate as part of your testimony. I think the question's simple. There was a number of objectives that you felt are met as part of this application. So other than the lack of townhomes, are those objectives also met by a three-family home? That's the question as a planner that you've been asked.
Well, I, certainly, again, it's, it's one alternative that could be considered that would fit within the context of the neighborhood, as are many others, I'm, I'm certain. But again, the app, I just want to remind the board, the application is, is for the townhomes. It's, I, I don't think we're at the point now where we're going to redesign this, this proposal. It's, it's just the program that was presented to me.
Are there other questions from members of the board? Okay. Do you have any further witnesses?
I have no further witnesses.
Are there any members of the audience who have either questions for this witness or comments on the application? I think at this point, we can combine both functions.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in a matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
Kathleen Bennett, Tengler Wood Road, chairperson of the HPC. And it's a comment. As Mr. Harrison stated, the HPC find that the proposed townhouse development is not consistent with the Frog Hollow potential historic district. And we felt that the same issues that were raised as far as a planning perspective, the three-family parking, the landscaping yard remaining in place, as one could be also met with a different type of dwelling that would be more consistent with the potential historic district, which is more residential than townhouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members? Any other members of the audience with comments concerning the application? Mr. Azulini, do you want to sum up now?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank the board for their time and efforts in this application, as well as the review committees that we met with. My client, Teresa Zanelli, the owner of 117 Valley Road, did not ask to be put in this situation. This was a tragic event where fortunately, no one was injured in, in the fire that the fire marshal said it was arson. But Ms. Zanelli now finds herself having to work through all these legal nuances and intricacies. And why? Because she really doesn't want to rebuild a 10-room boarding home. While it is financially successful, she didn't envision having to re, to continue this property as a 10-room boarding home, and was at times difficult to manage, even considering the arson event. So she came to us as professionals to assist her with designing a project that was appropriate for the neighborhood and financially feasible for her. This was, I thought, a very well-thought-out project. I just want to reiterate to the board that we did, at a concept level, sit down with the planner, the assistant planner. We sat down the development review committee, both of whom were receptive to our project and looked favorably upon it. Now, I certainly understand that the ultimate voice in this matter is you, the zoning board. But I hope the board would recognize that these are the actions we took before we came here tonight, that we weren't trying to just present a plan and, and this was it with no foresight, investigation, or willingness to modify. We obviously did meet with the HPC as well, and I do understand their concerns. We've addressed most of them, except for the, the main one, the elephant in the room, is the, the look of the, of the condos as opposed to a, a three-family type home. Now, again, I've always said that if this property were in the middle of this district, I wouldn't be sitting here now even advocating for this, because I honestly would think that would be a ridiculous proposal. But considering where this property is located and how it's uniquely situated, we almost came, we came to the opinion that was more part of the Valley Road part, because of the way the, the property is situated, rather than the R2 Walnut Street, and considering it was a 10-room boarding home. So we listened last time to the board with the recommendations on the change in some of the architecture, especially on the Walnut Street facade, the landscaping. And we came back and, and presented this plan before the board. And the townhomes that were designed here, as you look at the plans, are really of high quality and material, which if approved, we would sit down in terms of actual materials with the HPC. And this, I believe, does have a high aesthetic value on Valley Road. And on Walnut, like there was testimony heard with the landscaping and what's been designed, it really would fit into the character, or wouldn't stand out, let's put it that way. It wouldn't be an egregious affront to that neighborhood. So with regard to the legal justifications, I believe our planner, in his opinion, discerned that there was no negative impact to the surrounding community or zone plan as a result of the requested variances and waivers requested. He also testified there's no substantial detriment to the neighbors, and the lot is particularly suited for this project, given its location between the two zones, the NC zone and the OR3 zone. I believe this lot does present a great opportunity for a transition building, and we've accomplished that, I believe, with the input of the various committees and the applicant's willingness, willingness to incorporate many of the suggestions and recommendations. The new use and structure will be, in my opinion, a great improvement to the current state of the lot, rather than rebuilding a 10-room boarding home. We're also making this structure more conforming than what's currently existing. Now, I'd just like to point out that there was no evidence submitted tonight contesting the testimony of our professionals, and the board cannot discount the fact that no neighbors appeared in opposition to our proposed plans. I'd also like to point out that the Supreme Court of Price versus Hameji, which was cited by our planner, is certainly applicable here. The Supreme Court in that case did a deep dive into the particular suitability standard in granting D variances. That case highlighted a lot of issues we see here with properties that border on two different zones. Let me just, wanted to cite one part of that, that case. It's, it's quite a long case, and I'm not going to bore you with all this holdings in that case. But the court did hold that the particular suitability means that the general welfare is served because the use is particularly fitted to the particular location for which the variance is sought. The court held that an application demonstrates a special need, a special reason, if there is proof that the subject property is particularly suited for the proposed use, citing the Medici standard. I would go one further here and, and add that since the previous structure on the site was not conforming, that would be a, a much less beneficial to the general public than the actual use that we're proposing. So in your discussion tonight of the negative criteria, I believe the board can recognize and agree with our planner that this project is for the public good and does not frustrate the goals of your master plan and the zoning ordinance. In that regard, we have met the negative criteria. The property's location at the edge of two zones, actually three, if you include the R2 zone, it's at the edge of the R2 zone as well, is a unique configuration. It is also a long-narrow lot along Valley Road, which I believe makes it more appropriate to develop the property along Valley Road. The use of this design will reduce the side yard setback violation to our neighbor and give that neighbor more access to light, because his, his property, if you look on the exhibit A7, is, is close to the property line as well. I believe this all serves to demonstrate that the project satisfies the negative and criteria, positive criteria. So in conclusion, I would like to say that I believe, now while this isn't a Victorian home, as indicated on Walnut Street, I believe it's more suited to the Valley Road district, and it doesn't really impact on the streetscape on Valley Road. It actually enhances the streetscape. While at the same time, it really, I don't believe, detrimentally impacts the streetscape on Walnut, being at the end of the road. So based upon what I've said, what the board has heard tonight, I would request and ask that the board approve our requested use variance and other variances in connection with the application tonight.
I'm in favor of the application. I think it serves as a nice transition between all the zones that connect it, and it's, and the applicant did, did its best to take the considerations of the HPC and the others. So I am in favor.
Mr. Church?
I would be in favor of this if it weren't where it is. And the, the proximity to the R2 zone is troubling to me in the fact that it's going to change to, in my eyesight, the character of Walnut Street. Regardless of what you do to the facade of the building, on that side, it'll change the character. What you have going down Walnut Street, which is an integral part, I mean, that, the boarding house was an integral part of that architecture going down Walnut Street, although it was a boarding house. It, it fit. The building fit. This fits, yes, along the Valley Road side, but I am hesitant to vote for a change of appearance in town where other types of structures can be implemented. All over town, to my eyes, there are all kinds of buildings going up, where before there were either no building, or there were houses that were taken down and these new buildings put up, which is basically changing the character of some neighborhoods. And I believe that even though this is at the edge of a neighborhood, it will change the appearance and therefore the character of the Walnut Street side. The Valley Road side, I agree with the planner, yes, it fits into that configuration. However, to stay true to my feelings here, I would not vote in favor of this particular application, although I know something has to be done with that corner lot. But I would not approve this application because I don't feel that the townhouses are incompatible with the general area that it's located in. So I would vote against this application.
Mr. Allen?
I don't think I'm ready to make a decision yet. If I'm going to pass, listen.
Mr. McCullough?
I, I agree with Mr. Church that from the perspective of Wall Street, what is being proposed really would be more detrimental in, in character, meaning that it would not really be in keeping with that neighborhood. But then I think that has to be counterbalanced by the impact that it has on Valley Road. And based on what I see, I think that this would actually be very beneficial to Valley Road. And so it's a matter of balancing the benefits versus the detriment. And I think that in this particular case, this proposal would considerably enhance the look of Valley Road in comparison to the negative impact that it might potentially have on Walnut Street. So I would actually be in favor of this.
I just had to think about this. I'm not, I'm not generally in favor of building out of the, out of the, the zone, you know. I don't like rooming houses, though. And I know that one pretty well. I used to inspect it. And it is kind of a unique situation. The buildings in that area are all, on, along Valley Road are quite different. They're not all one kind of building, like, for example, they're not all Colonials or whatever. So I think I'm going to have to lean in favor of the application, because I don't think there's a, I can't see where there'd be- there's a, I can't see where there'd be a detriment. So I'm going to vote yes on it.
Mr. Caulfield.
If, you know, I'm driving around that all the time, and you told me that was a rooming house, I would never know, actually. Because it looked like it fit into everything else. But driving around, I would, if it's townhouses, I would definitely know that those would be townhouses. But looking at the tax map or the plan that the planner put up here, if I was to approve this plan, the only property that could maybe technically do the same thing would be the property across the street. But no other properties in this area look like that they could do, replicate this if I given this plan to go ahead, that, you know, other places will do it as well. I mean, that's my concern through all this stuff. And I don't necessarily see that from looking down on this map, if that could happen. So I'm in favor of what this plan can do for Valley Road.
Ms. Harris.
I think the way that this building is cited on the property kind of makes it a transition from the neighboring zones, the neighborhood commercial and the office. And so I'm in favor of the change in zone. But with that said, I do, I do feel that the street facades are just unattractive, even with the changes that were implemented that the HBC had recommended, especially at the ground level with the entrances. I just feel like there's something lacking in terms of the entrances. And I don't know if this, you know, will be a condition of the approval, but I would recommend that you do something more than just, you know, a solid door to these entrances from, from Valley Street. And the four, four options we were given for the Walnut Street facade, some were an improvement, but they didn't quite make sense with the program inside of the building. I don't know that you want, you know, a portico for, you know, a garage mandor. But I think more thought needs to be given to the facade, the street facades of this building.
We would certainly be willing to go back to the HBC with their recommendations. We're not committed to any one of those plans, so we're definitely open to that with further input from the HBC.
I am not in favor of the use variance as proposed. The, and let me go through multiple reasons. One, in spite of what was quoted from the master plan, I do not believe it was a mistake in terms of what this building was that led them to not propose it being rezoned or redevelopment area. There is a very uniform development, the, this section of Walnut Street. This lot is not either atypically large or small. The three lot, the two lots next to it are the same size, and then as you go down the street on that side, they get larger. The two lots across the street are smaller, but then the lots going down that side are all the same size as this. So there's nothing atypical here. The justification given is it's, is it's bordering the other zones. But I think the difficulty here is, and we get the lot next door, the testimony was, that house is not in good condition. And if I own that house and we grant this approval, I come in and say, me too. You've effectively made the lot next to me into an OR3. I back up into the neighborhood commercial, the same as that, and get some, you end up with something different. I, I think this is, I think there have been a number of things here, and I don't agree that a 10-unit boarding home is the same as a 10-unit, whether townhouse, apartment, whatever, they're very different constructs in terms of the number of people living there. I do think that there has been justification given for a three-unit building. The question is, what does that building look like? I don't think there's been really any justification for changing the, what I'll call, building type from a three-family to three-townhome units. I think one of the consequences, while it was stressed that the building coverage is slightly less than what currently exists, on the other hand, the impervious coverage increases by, you know, over, you know, by, from 66.9% to 74.2%, and it's just kind of a consequence of doing the townhome development. So I, I think, you know, this is a, the, you know, there is a logic of doing, you know, based on the neighboring zones, but on the other hand, you have significant portions of this R2 Zone where you end up with a similar argument. The houses on Dy Street all back, the lots on Dy Street all back up to the neighborhood commercial zone. It's the logic there, saying, well, they back up to that, let's put some townhouses there, rather than the two families that it's zoned for. There's the logic on the lots across the street, as Mr. McCullough said, you know, they have OR3 next to them and across the street, should they be changed? But that's not our job to look to change the zoning. I don't think this property is that unique. I think there is, and I think there has been justification for doing something different, but I think this is a situation where the, we should heed the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission that there should be. I think regardless of that, since I'm not opposed to approving, and we, you know, and well, and to do this, I mean, we, on Orange Road, we just changed what they were proposing and had them come back in for site plan approval, but that was another situation where the argument is, look at what's happening on either side of us, and where do you draw the line? The, you know, so I mean, if, you know, we're obviously, you know, taking that approach, they'd have to come back for site plan approval, I think we would, you know, and inherently they'd be going back to the Historic Preservation Commissions, we don't have to address that, but that they would, you know, they would make the landscaping changes that they proposed, that any trash, if they were, if they're having a trash enclosure, it would be conforming, and that the fence would be conforming. But I, I just, it is, it is just simply too different for me to vote in favor of the townhomes. And I think, as I said, they, I think for a variety of reasons, they've justified three units, but they really haven't given any reason why something that will fit in much more with the neighborhood and much more with the building that was there, is distinguished from the use, would fit in. So, but we can discuss further, we can, someone can make a motion, we can, we can't all sit here and say nothing.
But it makes this property somewhat different in the sense that it has its exit, there's two in Walnut Street, it's on the corner there, so, I mean, if this was going to be replicated down the block, like the next-door house, or the townhouse, I mean, that townhouse.
Or even Day Street, yeah.
Townhouses, I understand the townhouses, this is a, I mean, I do agree on that aspect of it, but I think that this is unique, that it has that corner lot.
Oh, but I mean, on Dy Street, you, I would assume someone would buy multiple lots and say.
Awesome.
Someone needs to, we could discuss, or we need to talk, you know, by making a motion or discussing further.
Yeah, I want to say something. I don't like the design the way it looks. There's some townhouses right up the street that look more like Victorian buildings and sort of fit in better, so I want to put that on the record. Maybe, I don't know if I'll change my vote, but I will say I would have to have a condition that changes that design to some degree to try to fit in with the neighborhood, or at least meet with the historic people and get their approval on the design. I would think that would be minimum. That's, that's how I feel about it.
One of the problems I have is, is that we seem to, this seems to be just, you're starting to change the look of the town as it gets, as, as these places come under reconstruction, it changes the look of neighborhoods. And that's kind of what's happening here, although it's on the edge of the neighborhood. It just, I think a three fam, a three-unit place is fine there, because if it's, if it fits into the neighborhood, you can't tell, there's three families living in it. And yet you, like, you couldn't tell that was a rooming house when it was a rooming house. It looked like a big home. And I think that is why I want to see more consistency in neighborhoods, rather than get these shocking changes as you're driving through a neighborhood, all of a sudden you see a townhouse development, or all of a sudden you see something else that doesn't fit. That's why I was, I'm against this application. I don't think, and I would agree with the chairman, that a three-family is out of the question. I just think a new design, three-family, could be placed before this board for consideration, rather than townhouses, because townhouses, to me, in this area, seem to just fly in the face of the design, even though right across the street, it's commercial, it's office buildings, it's everything else. You know, I always watched the corner house on Clermont and Valley Road, which was, once was a CPA firm, it was a doctor's office, it was this, but it never changed the complexion of the neighborhood. It looked like it belonged there. And this, to me, although I tried to stretch my imagination, doesn't. So that's why I would still be against the application, this particular application.
But I feel like that only applies to Walnut Street. I mean, there's this commercial corridor right down Valley with high density, I mean, we've got a strip center down the street.
I understand, but where do you stop it?
You can stop it right there, like the rest of the town.
I mean, where do you stop commercializing these neighborhoods?
Well, you know, I, I disagree with you, just because in other parts of town, there's no objection to building up and out. I think this particular property, the townhouse design, is actually more in line with what people want. I mean, I, I would not, I can't imagine people wanting to live in a three-family house in this day and age. Things are just different now. I think that the smaller townhouse design works, and in this particular location, I think it works very well because of the transition aspect of that corner lot. So in terms of the actual facade and the design, I, you know, it's a personal preference. So I, you know, I'm not going to disagree with, some changes could be made, but I think the attempt is appropriate for this location, so I still fully support this.
Yeah. And I, I agree with that. I mean, I, I would be, I would be open to, to, to a different facade, perhaps. I don't feel like it's an imperative. I would be open to it. But one of the, one of the reasons why I think I like the idea of having the townhouses here and facing Valley Road is that I think it creates more of a community feel to this area. I mean, everything else there feels very commercially oriented, and all of a sudden, it feels like it becomes more, it takes on more of the character of a neighborhood. And, and so I don't feel like this proposal necessarily threatens, as Mr. Caulfield said, I don't think it threatens the other area, other parts of this neighborhood in terms of people looking at it and saying, well, you know, I can go ahead and, and put another mammoth building up on my lot. I think, I think people might have more incentive to want to build that sense of community character that I think, for the most part, escapes this section of Valley Road.
I just remain concerned that there are innumerable situations like this going between Bloomfield Avenue and, you know, James Street, where you have R2 zoning adjoining on two, and in a number of instances, three sides, either C1, OR3, you know, you have the neighborhood commercial in this area, where I just think that's a change that should be done through a zoning change if they feel that that's not consistent, but it is to stay, I would say, probably a quarter of the R2. Homes are in comparable situations, I mean, lots are in comparable situations, and I worry about setting the precedent in terms of, okay, you have different zones on two sides, including across the street, so that's a justification for doing something different. But someone needs to make a motion, because it's fun sitting here, but probably we can all go home.
I'll make a motion to approve the application, subject to the Historic Commission's concerns.
And they also testified that they would do conforming fence and change some of the landscaping.
In those conditions.
There's changes to the landscaping that were testified, too. They're relocating the shed to comply with the six-foot side rear setback. They're going to make the building parallel to Valley Road. With respect to the HBC report of August 22, I assume we're talking about items two through eight, because item one says, don't make it a townhouse. Okay? And then I also think they indicate they were going to satisfy the report of Suburban Consultants of October 15, correct?
That's correct, counsel.
Those are the, those are the conditions that I think the movement should consider as part of that. Is that, Mr. Allen, is that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we need a second?
Second.
And again, this is the use variance, the 2C variances, and site plan approval.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Have the applications approved.
Great, thank you for your time and consideration time.
Okay. Before we adjourn, you got the draft meeting scheduled for next year. If everyone can look at it and identify days, you definitely can't come, and do not assume that just, it's just you can't come, and then suddenly we schedule it, and three people can't come, because three people didn't speak up and say, but, you know, we should adopt that. And I know we can't perfectly know, but sometimes you know, oh, I always go on vacation the third week in August, or things like that.
And just a reminder to the board that we will be holding our next meeting on December 4th. We have an additional meeting scheduled at that date, so we'll see you back here just after the Thanksgiving holiday on Wednesday, December 4th.
We can call, we can ask. We, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, at the next meeting, we'll schedule a discussion of the schedule. I wanted to get the dates out to everybody, so you have them.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Yeah, well.